Good evening, welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for August 2nd, 2016, for the Town of Acton, Maine. First order is the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
I second.
Moved and seconded, we approve the agenda. Any further discussion? No, call for vote, all in favor? All opposed? The minutes.
We're emailed to you at 12:27 this afternoon.
I'm pretty sure I checked my email after that and it did not come through.
I checked mine too and I haven't gotten mine either, so...
I am gonna invite you all to my, um, office after here because Elise actually just came in and asked for them and, uh, I guess I would recommend you can certainly table it until next week and we can do two weeks at once.
Why don't we do that?
But I would encourage you to come see the sent time on my email.
No, it's quite all right, I believe. Sometimes it just takes awhile to zip around the world.
Yeah, we can skip till next week.
So, okay, do we need a motion on that? Not really?
No, I think we'll just table it till next week.
Table that, yeah, sounds great. Department heads, committee chair updates. We don't have any. Let's move on to old business. Library repairs.
Michael's coming tomorrow to look at the space again and hopefully give me a date when I see him.
Perfect. And I already told you, we had the insurance, workers' comp, we have everything we need from him.
Everything's all lined up, just, uh, we need a date.
Okay, great. Uh, next item is fire rescue building in the fairgrounds.
I know that, um, the board had kinda tabled it and then we kind of talked about, maybe you guys speaking with the attorney, um, it would be easier if you had individual conversations with him, not so much to make decisions, but just to kinda hear what he has to say if you have concerns. Um, the other thing that we were waiting for was, um, the Fair Association, I spoke to Mr. Ridley today to confirm that they wanted to accept the building because just like you guys had to discuss it as did they, so, um, and I also, uh, spoke to the new fire chief and he's been touching base with people in, on his side, um, and also went down and checked out the building again and we still can't find any reason to, for the town to consider keeping it.
No reason to keep it, okay. Nope, that's fine.
Um, and the, the, the fair is, um, they're, they're fine with the stipulation in there, you know, we're gonna basically draft an agreement, we're gonna have the attorney draft an agreement that's gonna say something to the effect that as, as long as there ever is an Acton fair, the Town of Acton Fire Rescue will have first refusal of that building, something to that extent.
Okay, I mean, do we really need to involve the attorney for a hundred and something dollars an hour now?
Well, I mean, I think...
It looks like it's pretty much cut and dried that it should, should be turned over to the fairgrounds.
Right, I think it's just the agreement that both parties are gonna sign.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy if you two agree to just give the okay to have him draft up, start drafting the agreement, put the money towards that rather than, because every time we call him...
Who is he, what do you mean, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Who's gonna do the agreement?
Brad.
Okay, but every time we call him, like, you said for us to call him individually...
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes, yes.
I mean, we're still, we're gonna be generating, you know, half an hour's worth of bills a piece.
Right, I don't want, I just wanna make sure that you're not, you don't feel pressured or rushed and if you have any questions, it certainly, you can.
No, I'm, I'm satisfied, so, um, do you think, do you think that sounds better, Bill?
Yeah.
Yes.
Nobody has any questions for him, so we'll just allow him to authorize and draft it?
Yeah, yeah, because other than that, we're looking at, you know, at an hour and a half, if each one of us call him, add it up, I'd rather put that money towards...
Something else.
Doing the, doing the agreement.
Okay, and, um, in all honesty, I mean, I think that we've reached out to a lot of people on fire and rescue and they certainly talk amongst themselves, I mean, we haven't found anybody, even, uh, anybody at all that has any, um, you know, disagreement about handing this over, so, 'cause we've never, ever used it for anything else, so, it just makes sense. All right, I'll draft it, um, are there any other stipulations that you want in there or is that really the only one?
No, just as long as, as, like you say, as long as the, the fair is going on or when there's a function going on, maybe would be the better way to word it, um, that the fire rescue, fire rescue and security company has access to that building.
Okay.
And that that's the only use of the building, so, something to that effect.
Okay.
Yep.
I will now get something prepared for next week's meeting.
Okay. Salt bids?
Uh, salt bids, we should be able to, um, announce next week along with next week is the paving bid, so it'll work out well, um, I think that our road commissioners, um, are gonna try to be here, I know one of them's, um, gonna be a little late, but we're waiting for Southern Maine Regional Planning to release their bid, um, but we did get it from, um, let me rephrase that, we're waiting for Granite State to release, we already have Southern Maine, so, we should be able to make a decision on that next week with the paving as well.
Okay.
But it's out.
The paving's actually gone out to bid?
The paving is out, yep, it's under announcements, it's been out for...
Yeah.
Actually, you guys approved it last week, I think, right?
Sounds good, yep, we did. Excuse me, rec department soccer.
There is light at the end of the tunnel.
Beautiful.
At the end of the soccer field, is that kinda funny?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Paul's like, "Yeah, not so much." Um, a couple of things, so, first I'm gonna, I'm going to, um, say that I met with, um, a couple of people this morning, um, that were, that are fairly new to town, they, um, live on Nason Road, and they're really interested in getting involved, um, the two of them were very young and energetic and happy-go-lucky and they actually both played soccer right through high school, um, so they, right off the bat, knew a lot more than, you know, than I certainly did, they were really nice, genuine people, um, so we had a nice conversation about kinda what the job, you know, what, what we would need and, and what it would entail and how much we would be able to offer to assist along the way. They wanted to take a little time to think about it, but that was good that we got them, we got the email and then we got them in. Um, in the meantime, I got another email from another, um, younger individual in town that, um, is questioning, you know, what exactly you're looking for, what can I do, so I'm gonna reach out to him. And lastly, um, I had a third resident, um, in town, uh, come and offer services in regards to, you know, anything she could do computer-wise or keep track of the books or, um, just kinda on the side, she really didn't wanna take the whole thing on, but, um, we kinda had the conversation that if the staff or the town ended up taking it over, that she'd be our, uh, right-hand man to, to help us, so...
That's great.
It's looking good, we've got some, uh, positive stuff coming forward and hopefully one of these will come through, and I did officially get my first call today about when and where soccer signups were. So I told the parent to table that thought and get back to us hopefully within two weeks and, um, we'll be doing something.
Great, thanks, thanks to the public for, for stepping up and for the folks that...
Looking good, fingers crossed.
That's great. Okay. Moving right along to new business, order of municipal officers.
So each year, um, July 1st in the fiscal year, the selectmen are required to sign, um, what they call a 906 order, and, um, I'll let you read that out loud, it essentially instructs the town clerk and tax collector and treasurer to apply all taxes to the oldest year first. Um, believe it or not, some people, let's say, you know, the second payment was due in April of 15, um, we have some people that maybe send it in in August or, or September and they've got interest on there, or the interest becomes principal and they just don't wanna pay it, so they'll send in their next payment and they'll ask you to apply it just to the October payment and not take that back one, so without this policy, this order, we can't force them to pay off the oldest year.
Okay. Order of municipal officers pursuant to MRSA 906. We, the municipal officers of the Town of Acton, upon request of the tax collector, treasurer of the Town of Acton hereby authorize and direct said tax collector, treasurer pursuant to Title 36, Maine Revised Statutes and noted Section 906, to apply any tax payment received from an individual as payment for any property tax against outstanding or delinquent taxes due on said property in chronological order be applied to any tax for which the abatement, application, or appeal is pending unless approved in writing by the taxpayer. Stated August 2nd, 2016. Do we, we need to do a vote on that?
So once adopted, it's not, it doesn't run out, it's just forever?
Well, it's once a year, you're supposed to sign it, yeah, so that's, um...
So I guess I just need a, need a, uh, motion to adopt the order of municipal...
906 order.
I make a motion to adopt the order of municipal officers, uh, MRSA 906.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the minis, the order of municipal officers pursuant to MRSA 906. Uh, any discussion? No, call for vote, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you.
So, um, as you recall, we've been advertising that we're looking for committee members, so good news that we started off with the rec with some people, we got a call on Warrant and Finance and also got some Mary Grant, so the ads and the information that we're running, um, are working, the individual that I have that's interested in the, um, alternate position of Warrant and Finance is Jim Driscoll.
Okay. Certificate of Appointment Title 30, MRSA 2253, Selectman Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine. Two, James Driscoll. The selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as alternate warrant and finance committee member within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2017, given under our hand the second day of August, 2016. Do I hear a motion to accept Jim Driscoll's?
I make a motion to appoint James Driscoll to the warrant and finance committee as an alternate member until June 30th, 2017.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed?
Again, we've had some residents, uh, come forward that are interested, actually, let me, uh, rephrase that, not residents, two are non-residents, um, but I think we had this conversation, I spoke to Linda Cody, who is a resident of Acton, she's interested in being on it, Richard Neal and Mary Terrell, um, are non-residents, but they are interested in continuing to serve on the committee.
We have nothing that says that a non-resident can...
Um, I could not find anything, I went back as far as I could find the committee, um, kinda being put together and when the land was donated, um, it's really a non, you know, non-binding vote, you know, so, I couldn't find anything.
Okay, yeah, either one of you have an issue with a non-resident going on?
Yeah.
Mr. Neal, as you know, has been on it for many years, uh, Mary Terrell is actually Barbara's daughter, so she's been helping out along the years as well, so they're, um, well-versed in the...
Yeah, Barbara Seacase's daughter?
Yes.
Yes, I think she lives in Sanford.
Yep.
Okay.
And Linda, of course, is, uh, new this year to us.
Okay, okay. I will read the, I'll read the appointment and then the individual names rather than reading all three of these, if that's okay with you?
Yep.
Okay. Certificate of Appointment Title 30, MRSA 2253, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine. It's gonna read two, and it's gonna be Linda Cody, Richard Neal, and Mary Trillis.
Terrell.
Terrell. Terrell. The selectmen of the municipa, municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as Mary Grant Committee member, it's gonna be members, we have three, um, within and for the municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2017, given under our hand the second day of August, 2016. Do I hear a motion for the three individuals?
I make a motion to appoint Mary Terrell, Richard Neal, and Linda Cody for the Mary Grant Committee until June 30th, 2017.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Nope, all in favor? All opposed? Next we have building projects.
So at the annual town meeting, there was some approval for some projects, um, just wanted to kinda talk to you guys about which way we're headed with them and, um, because if we need to go out to bid, we can kinda get started on it. So, first of all, um, I guess the fire department roof, that was approved as far as the funding, um, we would need to go out to bid for it based on, um, what the estimate was, so I didn't know if you had a timeframe of when you thought you might like to have that done. Um, and these are things, if you want, we can kinda talk about and you can decide next week, um, but, so the fire department roof is one. The library, um, although the money was not appropriated for siding, um, I think that based on the, the conversations I've had with, with you guys individually, the front of the library can probably get done out of building maintenance, um, it's gonna be difficult to fix the walkway and fix the door at the library without doing the siding at the same time, and that's really the last piece in the front, so, um, we were looking at forty, five hundred probably for, uh, the siding on that piece, so we need to kinda talk about when that's gonna be done, are we gonna continue with our in-house contractors, uh, in-house employees and let them finish it? Uh, we've got the stair project that was approved by Warrant and Finance and the townspeople, so we need to, are we going out to bid?
Fire escape throwback.
Fire escape, um, and then, oh, yeah, and something, and, so the library's a big thing because we need to, um, we did have someone come out originally, originally when we put the warrant article on there, we had the individual that did the walkway here kinda come out and just give us a, a very rough estimate and that's where the number came from that was on the warrant. Um, when that didn't pass, um, we have someone else that does some brick and block work, um, that came out and just kinda gave us an idea because I wanted to see if we were anywhere near that, uh, seventy-five hundred that was allocated, uh, and we are, so this is, we are, yep, um, so I'm hoping, I don't wanna release his bid because, you know, he would have to bid again.
Right.
But we need to kinda plan all this because, you know, I mean, although it's August, September, October, you know, the employees need some notice, the, we've gotta get the phone company out to move all those wires, we need to think about the front door, are we gonna do one, are we gonna do two, so, I need some guidance.
True, yeah, um, definitely, we're definitely gonna do, if we can do it, the siding on the front there. I mean, it just, it just has to get done, and like you said, we can't do the, can't do the walkway until we do the siding, and it doesn't make sense to side up three feet and call it good.
Right.
You know, and that's the last part of the front of the building, so it needs to be done to make them look half-decent, so...
So we'll take that out of building maintenance and we, um...
We can do it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we...
And I'd like, yeah, if we can use our own guys that did, that did the rest of it.
Well, we kinda should, yeah, I'm just...
We should, I mean, that, you know, your, your work that you do, um, is like a signature. If someone else comes in and works on it, it may look different, so...
And, I mean, it's not a big, a big project.
Right, yeah, it's, yeah.
So, and it's gonna, I, I, you know, and I did kinda talk to them, it may be, you know, September, October before they can do that, so I wanna, it's gonna take me that long to get those wires off the front and...
Yeah.
So Bill, are you all set as well, Elise, as far as taking the building maintenance to do the siding?
Yep.
It's gonna be, we're looking at between, it'll be less than five thousand and, based on, um, everything that goes into the building maintenance, I think that we'll be fine with that, that's about the balance that we leave us, uh, knocking wood, that hopefully we have another mild winter, nothing happens with the furnace, we'll just have to deal with that then, so...
Yeah.
All right, so that and the library, so the, the walkway, I think that we should go out to, um, bid for, we'll do like a, a design bid build similar to how we did, uh, the first one, um, and probably tell them the amount that we have to spend because it, you know, somebody like Earthworks, for him to come back out and do another bid at, you know, to what I think was twenty thousand...
Yeah, fifteen, twenty thousand, whatever it may be, yeah.
It's gonna be a waste of everyone's time, so...
I mean, it's considerably smaller, it's, it's a smaller area, as long as the ramp area is, is, uh, proper for...
Wheelchair.
Yeah, wheelchair accessible and all that with the proper grades.
And Elise and I had spoken with, um, with Ken a little bit, we wanted, she wants to extend the, um, actual walkway so it goes to the full length of the building rather than coming in where it does, um, and we had talked about maybe only having one door and boarding up the other one to siding or windows, so, um, you're all set for me to prepare something to go out to bid for the front walkway?
I would think so, yeah, we probably wanna look at the front of the building just to see if one door is gonna look strange, but...
Well, it's gonna look different, 'cause it will be...
Yeah, I mean, 'cause what was that building, a school?
Yeah.
So, so that was, you'd have two, two doors, I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean you have to utilize two doors, you could put a photo door...
She doesn't now, she's...
Yeah, I mean, you could...
It's my big window, I have a big screen and...
So, yeah, so that could, you know, we could do something there, but, I mean, I'm not opposed to closing it off either, that would be the, be the best as far as taking care of anything as far as, uh, heat loss and whatnot, so, yeah, 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 I'd say we go ahead with that, if that's okay with you two.
As far as the wires and, and the phone and tele, everything that's out there, um, I spoke to Ken again today about it and that's really something that our phone guys are gonna come in and do, so that's not something we'd go out to bid for, we're just gonna have them move it.
Yeah.
He thinks a lot of it can be moved to that pipe, so I'm gonna start making some calls and see if we can get them to do that.
Yeah, it's gonna come off the front of the building somehow and come around to one of the sides and make it, clean that right up, make it look better.
Just finding the person to do that.
Yep.
So, all right, so we'll prepare, um, a bid for that, as far as the stairs, the back entrance, I mean, you've got two options, you can let the contractors that did the out front work just continue it, um, it's certainly gonna be under the price as well.
Right, right.
Or we can go out to bid and see if we can find a contractor to price out the stairs, I mean...
Probably makes perfectly good sense to have the contractors we have do it.
We haven't had any problems with them, it's, you know, when we have an electrical issue, we call so-and-so, when we have a plumbing issue, we call, I mean, it's just...
Yep. My other thought was, I didn't know if we wanted to look at maybe putting a set of metal stairs out there, but then you got something you gotta still maintain and it'd be good forever, but, you know...
And what is, I don't remember the amount, was it five, fifteen thousand?
Yeah, I think that had a large amount attached to it.
And that'd be more than enough for those stairs out there.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Um, let me just make a phone call to see roughly what a set of metal would cost.
Okay.
Uh, let's count the steps until, maybe done by somebody that does welding, so...
Okay.
I'm sure there's a couple, I, I do know one guy that could do it and I'm sure there's other contractors as well.
Right.
So, is that okay with you two? Do that?
No.
Okay.
And then the, uh, fire department roof, that's pretty standard based on the square footage, we'll prepare a bid and, and get that in there as well.
Yep.
Um, hopefully maybe we can do it the end of the fall.
Yep.
All right.
If I department roof, yeah, we wanna get that out maybe fairly soon, only because you start getting roofing towards fall and whatnot, they book up quick, they're trying to get things done.
Okay. I'm not sure how many, I mean, I don't recall how many bid on last time, I mean, we don't have a whole lot of large companies that bid that, but I certainly will send it to the same company that did these two because, I mean, they did a phenomenal job and clean and in and out.
They did a good job and we had one, one minor issue, they were right back the same day to fix it, so...
Oh, that's right, the, yeah, bathroom, right?
Yep, yep, little ice backup, so...
Okay, we'll get it out tomorrow.
Okay. Fire department claim.
Uh, just an update for the full board to make sure that everybody, um, has the same information, uh, the fire department had a, a leak, if you will, um, it sounds like an ongoing leak in one of the bathrooms, um, that eventually the water, um, buried up and, um, got to the point where it needed to be dealt with, um, so we've called Mam Municipal, the, um, adjuster, Kevin Flynn, has been out, Service Pro went out and dried it all up, uh, and now we're just waiting for the adjuster to give the okay, and they're looking for contractors as well, um, I did speak to the new fire chief regarding that and reminded him, or, you know, some of the policies that we have and, um, so he's working on finding somebody to do that.
Okay, good. Item F, maintaining veteran cemeteries in Acton.
All right, so we've been, uh, talking for the last couple of years, it seems like, for the, um, the veterans that are buried here in Acton, we know that, uh, we're required by law to maintain those and certainly it's been every board's wish to do that, we've just been kinda figuring out, you know, how are we gonna do that? First of all, the big thing is how are we gonna find them all and then how are we gonna maintain it, so, some of the things, I just wanted to, I gave you guys a packet, um, certainly don't expect you to make any decisions tonight, but it shows you the, what we allocated, the twenty-seven fifty, that includes the flags, which are about seven hundred, so, I'm gonna keep that in mind, um, the audit's not done yet, but there will be a little bit of a rollover from last year that will go into this, so, it's at two thousand, um, the stone that we fixed last year, I'm gonna say was about fifteen hundred, give or take, so there'll be a little extra money in there, um, but possibly as we're getting into the late fall, we can find some stones that need, you know, fixing now, we could use some of that money for that, and then maybe find a way to incorporate the mowing and maintaining of these graves in Acton when we go out to bid for our mowing around the rest of the town.
Yep, sounds good, yeah.
Lois has some information strictly on the, um, veterans buried here in Acton and along here.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Lois Missu, I've been going back and forth, I was on the conservation committee, I'm not on any committee and any boards at this point, I'm actually maintaining my own business, or not business, but attending to another association, this is cemetery association. I've been going over to Milton, New Hampshire, where they also have cemetery associations, a cemetery trustees now, because they're now going from having individual associations to trustees, the town's taken them over, it's a slow process, expensive process, and not an easy process. I've been going over because eventually, if I pass away or some of the people that are, are family residents or whatever you wanna call it, if there's no longer interest, eventually, it might end up at the town, we never know at this point, but this is how it's going and I wanted to know process and prob, and how to go about it. About every two weeks, I've been going over there and attending, I gave you all a list of what, what I feel that we're looking into, 'cause I've been, Hannah and I have been volunteers since I can remember, I mean, we were in four H together, my great aunt, which is Hannah's mom, used to take us everywhere, we went, uh, out in East Magosh Woods and we were in briar patches trying to put flags out to everybody and so on and so forth, so, it's not an easy project which y'all are taking on and I'm, I'm glad that it's finally come to light, and unfortunately, I'm sorry that the state had to take, you know, step in, I wish it had just been taken on ten years ago when I was on conservation, it'd been a lot easier on all of you guys, 'cause it, it would've been a head start and we wouldn't have been where we're at today, making you take it on. Um, I, it's not an easy task, there's, I gave you guys ten things to think about on that piece of paper that I foresee coming towards headaches and problems that may or may not exist, and, and if you can get up a cemetery already in, in doing, and you can maybe adopt it out, look at some way of maybe your neighbor that, that's next to the cemetery, I'll give you a good, for instance, a good herd cemetery, yeah, I know you guys have it, but the gentleman that lives next door to it maintained it, took care of it and mowed it, you, he never, he never asked you guys for a dime, he just did it on his own 'cause he felt it was best to do. Technically, he could've came to you guys and said, "Hey, I want X, Y, and Z," he didn't bother, and it was a good thing, he did, maintained it. Was it right or wrong? Who knows, he's just, he's out on his property, did it. And that's what I'm looking for, maybe once all of these get done, maybe because it's on your property or your neighbor's property, that you might wanna adopt it after it's all taken care of. Obviously, my goal for the town is you guys to take on all the cen, all the cen, all the cemeteries eventually, not all at once, 'cause I know the veterans are primary, what I'd like to see y'all do is take on every one of them and have your own committee for it, because it seems to work best, and then you can go from all your rules and regulations, making sure you guys as overseers, that whoever you, you let do the board or you adopt out, that it gets done. And that's prim, and once it's reckoned, we can keep a record here, we can keep a record in historical society, it's done. That way if trees start growing, um, stuff starts breaking, we can deal with it, we can deal with it then, not, obviously, some of these have been out there longer than I have, and we're dealing with them now, and unfortunately, I know a lot of them are broken, a lot of trees in a lot of places that shouldn't be, accessing somebody else's property, that's a touchy subject, you're gonna have to look into that a little bit more because they can't stop a family relative going out, but they can stop somebody else.
General public.
Yes.[1764.97] Yes. Luckily, Hannah and I have not had that problem, because the general public, ten to one, we're related to or no. So, we haven't had that problem yet. Hannah graciously, the last few years, she's been doing her thing, going around town and, and maintaining and making sure everybody has the flag. I've been maintaining down here. She does do the flags for us. I've offered a couple times, but she, she likes to go, make sure everybody's out there, make sure the things are done right, make sure nobody's vandalized anything, because I know one year she had an issue of them taking the metal off in a cemetery. And I've had issues with vandalism. So, we kind of, we, 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 we talk about it, but nothing to any extreme. But I want you guys to realize, I'm glad it's coming up. It's not gonna be an easy project. It's gonna be bear a grin, however it goes.
We've got a plan.
You're gonna have to put one into gear. And, um, as far as being part of the conservation and forestry, it might be a little bit too much for them. You might want to consider a subgroup, maybe even often them.
Possibility, yeah, we talked about that.
Only reason is, is because it, it is a lot. And if they have anything to do with forestry in town, they're gonna be busy with that, or anything to do with developments. I'm assuming that's part of their job.
Yeah, I think Ed's gonna go to the next meeting as the liaison and mention that and talk to them about that.
The biggest thing that we needed was a list of, of names and where the cemeteries are, and we, we've got, what, four and a half pages here of names, which is absolutely...
I told you guys you'd be surprised.
No, that, no, that is absolutely terrific. I mean, these date from, we have Civil War, we have, uh, World War One and Two, we have Revolutionary War, we have Vietnam, we have, uh, Spanish-American War, we have just some Indian Wars, War of eighteen twelve, uh, we have several that are marked as militia, so I'm assuming that would be Revolutionary Times.
It depends upon when the militia part was.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a little bit more history involved, and you guys would be amazed to it when we were, when I was on the board.
We have, we have Korean War. We also have, uh, I saw one on here, Persian Gulf. So, it dates, it dates right back from the start of the country, right up to almost, almost current times. So, I mean, this to me is invaluable information.
It is, very good.
So, um...
And like I tell you guys every year, when Hannah goes and does this, take a roll, take a jog, because it's not just a one-day adventure. It is several.
Yeah, so I thank you for everything you've, you've brought forward to us and given us.
I mean, I intend to continue going to Milton to make sure things are on a roll. If you're interested in me reporting back to you, that's fine. Um, I'm pretty open to however it goes. You know, how, yeah, how that goes. It's just, I figured you guys needed some heads up, because it's not, like I said, it's not an easy task.
No, but it's, but it's, 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 well, I find it interesting to start with, and, and it's something we need to do, so.
Yeah, and if you, and if, then there is the name, we, we did name each of those cemeteries, by the way, that came with that.
Yeah, yeah, we have that.
If you can, just in closing, um, if you know of any specific, um, stones that are in, uh, worst case, you know, in, um, worse damage than others, or worse condition is what I'm trying to get at, then others that kind of jump out at you with your knowledge. I'm gonna reach out to Hannah as well, but if anything jumps out at you as far as a real bad gra, uh, stone...
The only thing that really jumps out to me right now is up in Langley's. They've got four up there, and some of them are in pretty rough, rough going.
I'm gonna think about.
Especially the direct line to, to, um, David. There's a, there's a couple Langley stones that are, that are actually snapped and half are broken, so that might be something that...
I'll get ahold of Dave, and he can take me up and take a look, and or a witness to go.
His father loves to go out to them. That's how we felt. We actually missed one, and that's how one year we actually went out and got it. But there's probably several others that are buried that I can't think of right off that, but Hannah or Paul.
It'll be the process for us, and hopefully the people will keep adding to it and give us more names as we go along.
Alright, and if you're interested in any more, I gotta say, you know, we'll...
Thank you.
Thank you, Lois.
Appreciate it. Okay, application for commercial hauler. Actually, anything else we want to discuss on these cemeteries? You two happy with where we are right now and...
So, you're gonna go to, kind of go to the committee and see where they're at, and then we can come back, and maybe I'll touch base with Hannah, too, if it's okay with you?
Yeah, I do, I do kind of foresee a subcommittee under that committee.
Yep.
You know, because you can get a couple of people that are passionate about it and want to work on it. That's all the better.
Right. In the meantime, if we can spend this money before the snow falls on some really bad stones, and then find a way to incorporate it in next year's bid, I mean, that's where you had gone, you had mentioned before. You still want to go that route?
I would think so. I mean, the state statute, which we have in front of us now, states that we do have to maintain those graves. It doesn't say...
And we want to.
Pardon?
And we want to.
Yes, we do. I mean, it doesn't say cemetery. It says graves.
Right, right.
That was one question I had. Are we doing, you know, just because someone's buried here, does that mean we do the whole thirty acres?
Right.
No, it's the grave. So, we have to maintain that grave, um, stones, keep it, keep it up to where it should be.
One quick thing. I do, where I do run the Maple Grove, we tried that one time. We just, this one does this, this one doesn't do that. It doesn't look right. You might, you might, if you're gonna have somebody go and do it.
Right, but I...
If I was fixing it, no, I agree.
Right, but the, but the town piece of it, that, you know what I mean, if we're paying, if we're using town money, it depends on how we do this. I mean, we gotta be careful if they're private property cemetery.
Ideally, we'd like to find adopters for the entire cemetery, but as far as fixing stones, yeah.
Definitely.
Because what, what was going over in New Hampshire is that they are, obviously, had the same way we do, because it's federally mandated. You have to take care of your veterans first. What happens over there is they decided, instead of just taking care of that one, they took care of the whole. Because they found, by even just doing the one, you still gotta pay to have somebody go there and pay to have something done.
Oh, yeah, you gotta walk in. It might be the last one in, and, yeah.
And they, and they decided to take and get permission from everybody and take on the, take on the whole group. And if you guys take it on as a whole group, it could be ten years down the road. I don't know. But if you guys take it on as a whole group, you're gonna see things develop. Things will be a lot calmer, a lot better. When something grows, something breaks, you'll be able to take care of it then.
Right.
It's like, it's like a big project starting. It's like putting Town Hall together at first. It came with bits and pieces. Now, look at it. You know, we, we've, I, I remember being here, and we had the outhouses, so that's how far we've come. Well, it's that kind of thing. I think once you start, you'll want to continue and, and kind of let it grow.
Yep.
Another idea, too, just real quick, um, that I had was advertising being able to adopt a vet or adopt a cemetery. And sometimes families, um, we'll pick on, on Paul, because he's so generous and in the front row. You know, maybe Paul, the Poiant family wants to, wants to adopt the, um, you know, whatever, one of the cemeteries.
Yep.
You know, there's some that only have two or three in it, and maybe they would, you know, just take on that, maintaining it, and, you know...
Yeah, just these, he's going in there with a weed whacker once a month and just cleaning it up.
Right, if different families took on, you know, one here and there, we might be able to get a lot done as a community.
Yep, great, good.
Something to think about.
Work on that, so. Wonderful. It's the application for commercial hauler.
Uh, Mr. Travis Penny is our only commercial hauler in town. Uh, he's been with us for several years now. This is our second year under the new ordinance, um, that he's needed to come forward with the insurance. He's come forward with the proof that he's exempt from workers' comp. He's now paid all of his fees, um, so I've spoken to Bob Mann. We have no concerns. So, with the board's approval, we'll extend that for another year.
I don't see why not, as long as we have everything in place.
If all the paperwork and Bob's happy, so.
Yep, yep, and he's done, he's been here, what, two years, you said?
Uh, well, no, it's only been a couple of years since we've had the ordinance. He was dumping long before there was an ordinance.
Yeah, he's, okay, okay, okay. Yeah, this brought the permit fee up to, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, so.
Right.
Okay, um, do I hear a motion to extend this for another year?
I make a motion to extend the application for commercial hauler's permit to Travis Penny for the, um, this coming year until the June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Yep. Seconded? All in favor, or all any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. It's today, the second.
No, okay.
Next, we have the two thousand fifteen, sixteen town report.
Tis the season for town reports. So, um, as the board knows, we've already had our pre-audit go team. It went well. They met with, I mean, they, I know they had a little bit of conversation with you, but, uh, they were here for about a week, a week and a couple of days, and, um, we've reminded them that part of choosing them again was, you know, with a stipulation that they'd get it done a lot quicker. Um, so we reviewed the deadlines that we had for them, so, um, now I really need the board to, uh, start thinking about reaching out to their committees and employees to start turning in town reports.
That goes from last, last July first to this, this June.
Correct.
It's best to do it early while it's still fresh in everyone's minds. Do we want to set a deadline for getting the reports back to us?
So, on a good day, memo will go out by the end of the week. Um, so honestly, I mean, if we gave them until Friday, September second, I mean, that's almost a month, does that feel like, that feel like it might be enough time?
I think I'd almost go a little longer, only because...
You do know that once we've set the deadline, it'll go longer anyways?
Oh, I realize that. I'm just hoping that maybe this year it won't. The, I, you know, wishful thinking, of course.
Okay.
Um, I'm thinking like the end of September, only because you have vacation times. We're in the middle of, you know, towards the end of summer. I hate saying the word "end of summer." Uh, you know, Labor Day's coming up. I just think...
Okay.
I can honestly tell you, the, the one for the selectmen's office won't be done in that time period. So, if we...
Well, that's, I mean, I don't have to do it this year.
You, you won't have to do it this year.
Excellent.
Did I just say that in public?
Whatever, um, whatever date is good for you guys. I mean, I just, to me, it doesn't do any good to, to put it too far out, because I know we're gonna be, you know, we're gonna have to be getting them anyway, so that whatever deadline you put out, that, that's my official when I can start hounding them date, so, whenever.
I know, I'd like to say, you know, the end of September and, and say the middle of September.
So, when is it you're hoping to go out to print?
We give them a fifteen day. When do we normally go out to print?
December, January?
Yeah, so, we'd be nice if we could go out to print earlier than that.
I'd like to have them out bef, I mean, we're kind of hoping to have them handing out at tax season in October.
That, I think, is wishful thinking. I'm not...
It's just a one-page report.
I'm not that optimistic.
Alright, alright. So, what deadline in September? Can we compromise somewhere in the middle?
Well, I was gonna give you the fifteenth to send out the official hounding letter.
So, um, so reports will be due by the fifteenth?
Okay.
Well, oh, I'm sorry. No, no, I'm not...
I was gonna say the thirtieth, but giving them a, yeah, I'll give a, a, you know, a warning shot on the fifteenth.
Okay.
Is that suitable for?
September fifteenth.
September fifteenth.
I'm used to doing it in August for the library.
Well, you can still do it in August.
I mean, I can, but I just...
You could be the first one to have it in.
I probably won't. Um, yeah, I just, I don't know. I...
Do you want to, do you want to tighten it up a little?
I'm new in the process, but, you know, it is a one-page report. It's still fresh in people's minds.
And, and, and I hate to, I mean, it just, people often question, I mean, so the fiscal year ends June thirtieth.
Right.
If we're not out to print till December or January, I mean, it's like seven months later.
It's old news.
It is. I mean, it's a great historical thing, and that's the reason that we do it, so that, you know, we can always go back.
Every, yeah, throughout the year, we always, we do go back and...
Right. I mean, it's good. How about their, so, what, you said they were due the thirtieth, but by the fourteenth, we can, we give like bonus points for people to turn them in early or something? Cookies, anything? Please get your town reported early. Okay, thirtieth, thirtieth it is.
Okay with you, Bill?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, and send out, you know, harsh emails on the fifteenth.
Yeah, they're gonna be like, "I watched that. I watched that show. Ed, I'm good with Ed until the thirtieth."
Oh, no, 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 no.
Alright.
No, the fifteenth would be great, but I mean, I just see, I just know how it goes between now and...
So, our goal is the fifteenth.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Okay, so the, mark that down, thirtieth of September.
Fifteenth.
Very good. Okay. Next on the list is public comment. Seeing none, we'll move along and...
I did, I...
Oops.
Hi, I'm Holly Mooney. Um, I was asked just to speak about the yard sale that we're going to be doing for the veterans on September thirteenth.
Okay, just a quick announcement that we're having, that there is going to be a yard sale?
Yeah, and that it's gonna be here at the Town Hall. Um, I think it's, it's possibly going to be the thirteenth and the fourteenth, but we're going to definitely have it on the thirteenth.
Okay.
So, we just wanted to put that out to the townspeople. And also, um, so we've got like a week and a half. We're hoping to get, um, donations for the yard sale, so we were wondering if we had like a drop place that people would know to donate the goods.
I did, I mean, it's up to you, and it's certainly the board's call. This is, um, I, I told you that I got a call asking for, to use the space, um, for the fundraiser.
Which we use, yeah, which is available for fundraisers and whatnot, so.
Yep, so thirteenth and fourteenth, and we booked the hall just in case it rained.
Okay.
Um, I had offered as tax collector to hold any funds, um, should they want. Um, and we have a closet. We can certainly put stuff in or hide it behind if the board's okay with that.
It's okay with me.
So, should we have the Town Hall here as the destination drop-off place for anybody out there that has some...
Well, I think they'd be better off to, if, I mean, if they can hold the items and bring them the day of the, of the...
Or the day before, because we're gonna be using the hall, you know what I mean, prior to, so we don't want to be responsible for something that somebody left.
And we thought also, maybe like the fire station asking them, I don't know. I mean, I just, I don't know if everybody can do it that day.
Well, if you do it the night before, maybe even two days before. If you planned on, you know, good drop-off hours would be Thursday and Friday of the weekend before.
Would be the drop-off time, yeah.
Okay.
So that you don't get stacks anywhere, sorry.
Right, and so nothing turns out missing.
Right.
Alright, so where, so where did you, where are we saying that you would drop off?
Well, wherever you...
You can drop it off. I mean, if we can, if we can talk afterwards, we'll agree to a couple of dates. But I mean, I, I think that he's right. It would, if we did drop-offs between, you know, these hours on Thursday and Friday, you know, the weekend before, um, you know, that may be, you know, more suitable. Um, and maybe, you know, if somebody was absolutely not gonna be here, they could drop it off at your house, and you could bring them up that Thursday and Friday.
Okay, we just want to make sure that the public knows, so that we...
Yep, we, after the board approved the dates, and, um, I did offer on my own time to help with a, a notice. Um, we were gonna mention it to them next week, so that they, once they got okay to okay.
Holly, do you have a time for the, the sale?
I, I really don't. I'm thinking like, I would think on Saturday. I'm assuming that...
Those are yard sales. They're early people.
It's early. It's like eight AM, I think, yeah.
Get there and get your stuff.
So, like an eight to noon, or eight to four?
I think probably longer than noon, I'm hoping. Probably like eight to four, at